Yep, go ahead.
No, sir? Okay. Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the August 24th, 2020 meeting of the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission to order. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme. Mr. Scrubby Tennis. Here. Mr. Khan.
Here.
Mr. McPartland.
Here.
Mr. Darpino. Mr. Oster. Ms. Shenfield.
Here.
Ms. Gold. Chairman Walsh.
Here. Uh, thank you, Mr. Henry. And just for the record, Mr. Laflamme and Mr. Darpino both contacted us and they are excused tonight. So, thanks. All right, so we have a set of minutes for approval. Minutes are from the July 13th, 2020 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
By Mr. Oster, do I have a second? Okay, well, I'll second.
Uh, I seconded it, mister. I was just on mute.
Okay, I didn't hear you. Okay, sorry. Thank you. Seconded by Mr. Khan. All right, I have no changes. Does anybody have any corrections or comments on the minutes at all? No? No, neither did I. Okay. All right, looks good. All those in favor of approval of the minutes as submitted signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain just because I wasn't there on that meeting.
Okay, right. Ms. Shenfield's abstaining. Anybody else? Any, anybody concerned with the minutes at all? No. Okay, see, nobody, nobody with any concerns and we'll approve the minutes as, as prepared. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our public hearing tonight. We have one public hearing on 859 Pierce Road, a two lot minor subdivision. Mr. Henry, would you please read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to Section 187-7 of the Code of the Town of Niskiuna and the applicable provisions of New York State Town Law Section 276, a public hearing will be held by the Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town of Niskiuna by video conference on the 24th day of August 2020 at 7:00 PM to consider an application from Hans and Judith Knut for a two lot minor subdivision at 859 Pierce Road in the town of Niskiuna. The property is located within the R1 zoning district. A copy of the application for the two lot subdivision will be available for inspection at www.niskiuna.org under the News and Announcement tab and will be shown electronically during the public hearing. To participate in the public hearing by video conference, copy this link to your web browser, meet dot global dot com. To join the public hearing by telephone, dial 1-347-508-4711 and enter PIN 892751088. If you are unable to participate electronically or by telephone, but would like to submit a comment to be read during the public hearing, please email your comment to lrobertson@niskiuna.org by 4:00 PM on August 24th, 2020. The Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town of Niskiuna will hear all persons interested during the aforementioned public hearing by order of the Planning Board of the Town of Niskiuna, New York, Kevin A. Walsh, Chairman, Planning Board and Zoning Commission.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Henry. Laura, do we have anybody queued up for speaking under this public hearing, or do we have any correspondences?
Sorry, I was muted. I did not receive any specific request to participate in the public hearing.
Okay, and no emails, Laura, also?
No emails.
Okay. There you go. Last call for the public hearing. Okay, hearing no one and not receiving any requests, we'll close the public hearing on 859 Pierce Road. Thank you. Next up is privilege of the floor. Anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters in the Town of Niskiuna, please state your name and address for the record. We'd love to hear what you have to say. So I'll turn that over to you, Laura, to coordinate that.
Okay, I have both Art and Connie on the line and potentially Gail. Um, so Art, do you want to go first? You're the first one to reach out. You're on mute, Art. There you go.
Okay, uh, good evening, members of the Planning Board. My name is Art Pascarello. My wife, Liddy, and I live at 4016 Windsor Drive. I'm speaking this evening on behalf of the residents of Windsor Drive, and I would like to address several issues regarding the Kelts Farm application. First, we would like to thank Supervisor Syed and the members of the Town Board for the decisions they reached in approving Resolution 2020-193. They properly addressed the statutes and regulations of the State Environmental Quality Review Act as they met head-on with the challenge of a substantial adverse change in traffic and noise levels that would result from the Windsor Drive connection. As you review the site this evening, please keep in mind the main points of the resolution that was passed. Number one, no road connection would be completed in connection with a special use permit. Number two, the development may only include a multi-use path between Windsor Drive and the proposed development. And number three, the open space shall be dedicated to the Town of Niskiuna with a deed restriction that it shall remain forever wild. Regarding the term "open space", one of the purposes set forth in Section 220-28 of the Niskiuna Town Ordinance for an average density development, one of the purposes set forth is to preserve the natural and scenic qualities of open space. We obviously think that's important. Regarding the inclusion of a deed restriction that the land remain forever wild, I would suggest and request that you consider adding a phrase that says, "This deed restriction shall run with the land." That legal terminology would further solidify the intent to keep the space open in perpetuity. The residents of Windsor Drive are keenly aware that the members of this board have feelings regarding the Windsor Drive connection to River Road. We would request most respectfully that there be no backdoor attempt to adjust the conditions on the site to allow for a future connection. That would subvert the findings of the Town Board and the spirit of the law as well as the letter of the law. In view of the clarity of the resolution and the wording of that resolution, the terms "spirit of the law", which was previously used by neighbors Connie and Paul Trigger and by your attorney Alexis Kim, and the letter of the law are clearly aligned. There should be no confusion. It should be easy to follow with little unnecessary, unnecessary interpretation. Lastly, it is assumed that County Engineer Sheldon was not aware of the Town Board's decision when he commented on an expansion, an expansion of the path. Additionally, and for the reasons previously presented to you, the issue of an emergency access does not appear significant. I thank you for your attention.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Connor, would you like to go ahead?
Sure. Hi, everybody. I'm Connie Trigger. This is my husband, Paul.
Good evening.
We live at 4072 Windsor Drive, and we've been following the different Kelts Farm site plans that you've been working with, some official and some sketches. And a couple of questions have come up that we hope you can answer tonight during your discussion. Our first question is how the Windsor Drive stub is going to be addressed. In sketches that Laura shared with the Planning Board and the Complete Streets Committee, the stub is converted into green space. Has there been any further discussion on that? Since emergency access onto River Road was just not recommended by the Schenectady County engineer in his letter to you as opposed to prohibited, and his question about using the bike path is moot since the Town Board directed that there be no vehicular connection there. And because emergency access isn't required in this setting, the stub won't serve any purpose. Converting pavement into greenery would be an environmentally positive action. Our next question is more of an observation, and it's about the multi-use path and the sanitary sewer line and their change in location from one plan to the next. In Revision 8, the multi-use path and it appears portions of the path the sanitary sewer line takes have been moved to the left, and the lot line of the nearest structure to the north on Kelts Farm Road has been shifted to the right. Also, the multi-use path, rather than following the general, general direction of the sanitary sewer line as in the previous revision, or gracefully meandering as in sketches that Laura has done, now follows the sanitary sewer line exactly. Since sanitary sewer lines are typically located directly under roadways, and the amount of space between the stormwater area and the nearest lot line has been significantly increased, enough to accommodate a roadway, we want to be sure that this is not an attempt to continue the option of a cut through being a possibility in the future. And finally, we are also interested in learning about what areas will be deemed forever wild, both in the area of the multi-use path as it appears in Revision 8 and near the Windsor Drive stub. Will all undeveloped land have that designation, including the land that the multi-use path will pass through? If the area where the multi-use path is located is not designated as forever wild, it would give the impression that there is an intention to use it for something else in the future. It is our expectation that to follow the spirit of the Town Board's resolution and as defined by Alexis Kim at your August 10th meeting, that any undeveloped land will be designated as forever wild. And we look forward to listening to your discussion about the latest site plan later in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura, were you able to get it up? Sorry, Laura.
Yeah, I... Gail King, did you, were you able to call in? Are you on the line? Gail? If, I know I saw a couple people join by phone. If you did join by phone, sometimes you have to press star six to unmute yourself in the system in order to be heard. So if, if Gail, that's you, if you wanted to try pressing star six, go ahead. And then the only other thing I noticed is Mr. Gifford joined. Mr. Gifford, were you interested in speaking at the public hearing and/or privilege of the floor? Are you just listening? Can you see him, Kevin?
Yeah, I see Mr. Gifford. He's on mute.
Um...
Can you hear me now? This is Greg Gifford.
There you are. Yep.
Yep. Yes, Mr. Gifford, did you want to speak? Oh, go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to speak about the Knight subdivision, the two lot subdivision. I think we've already been by that. Um, and I'd like to state that I am an immediate neighbor to the subdivision, and I'm in favor of the, of the subdivision as, as I see it drawn. And I guess that's about all I've got to say.
No, thank you, Mr. Gifford. And that's appropriate also under privilege of the floor, so thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Right. So just wait on whether or not we have Ms. King available to speak.
Yeah, and she hasn't sent me another email. And, I mean, it's not great, but she only emailed me 15 minutes before the meeting. You can't really do that much when it's that close. Um...
Yeah, we did receive...
Go back. Yeah.
Yeah, excuse me. I did receive, I was carbon copied on an email earlier from Ms. King where she talked about concerns with the, uh, the amendments to the zoning code, specifically the neighborhood commercial. Uh, she's concerned that any pre-existing neighborhood commercial uses would be impacted by the code. But my understanding is that they would be grandfathered in and not subject to the new setback requirements, if that's what her concern was.
Yeah, and we can talk about it, the zoning code amendments, but that is just actually like a typo in the code. There isn't any use that doesn't have setbacks. Um, and for whatever reason, when that use was added, it didn't, it didn't have setbacks, but no setbacks. And it's just for mixed-use buildings, so, um, yes, any mixed-use building would be grandfathered.
Okay, well, we'll talk more about that later. No one else, Laura?
Nope, not that I have.
Okay, all right, we'll move on. Uh, we have closed privilege of the floor, and we have no unfinished business tonight, so we have a few actions tonight under new business. First, first one being Resolution 2020-28, a resolution for final approval of a two lot minor subdivision at 859 Pierce Road. And, of course, the full resolution was posted to our website, as they all are. Now, just summarize part of it. Resolved that this Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby grant two lot minor subdivision approval for the subdivision of property at 859 Pierce Road as shown on the map entitled "Subdivision of Lands of Knight, Town of Niskiuna, Schenectady County, New York, prepared by Eisner, surveying and pictography dated 7/10/20 and last modified 8/14/2020, subject to the following conditions. One, in accordance with Chapter 180 of the Soil, Erosion, and Sediment Control Ordinance of the Town of Niskiuna, the applicant shall put in place soil erosion and sediment control measures sufficient to stabilize disturbed areas. These measure, measures shall be satisfactory to the superintendent of water, soil, and engineering and shall remain in place until such time as natural vegetation has been successfully established. Two, wetland boundaries shall be recorded and shown on any plot, plan of a building lot containing wetlands. Wetlands may not be disturbed, drained, or physically altered in any way without first contact in the Army Corps of Engineers. Additionally, the Town of Niskiuna requires that no land can be disturbed within a 25-foot buffer from the boundary of the wetland. Three, prior to the issuance of any building permits, any engineering and drainage concerns will be addressed to the satisfaction of the town superintendent of water, soil, and engineering. Or any minor changes to the final plat shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the town planner. Five, the applicant shall retain as many of the site's large trees that's over six-inch diameter breast height as possible during construction on Lot B. And six, no further subdivision of these parcels shall be allowed. Um, do I have a motion on this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution.
Okay. Thank you. The resolution's moved for approval by Mr. McPartland. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and seconded by Mr. Oster. Thank you. And we'll have some discussion. Um, I have, let's see, this one comment, uh, under, uh, under condition number four about minor changes being addressed just for the public's information. You know, minor changes like that where I correcting the town engineer information regarding the variance that was received on this parcel, the 25-foot frontage, uh, showing utilities and identifying the zoning. Um, so it's just for public information. Um, the only question I have regarding the resolution is on, um, condition number six, regarding no further subdivision of these parcels shall be allowed, allowed, excuse me. I guess my question would be for Deputy Attorney, Ms. Kim. Um, is that sufficient? I know that we changed the word several times of, of what we want to do with that. Is that our latest condition of how we want to handle that, or is it more extensive regarding being filed with the deed or something along those lines?
I think that's sufficient.
That's sufficient, okay. All right. Uh, might also, Laura, or under your condition number four, we might actually want to add that to the plat also. I didn't see that on the plat. It says no further subdivision when I was looking through it today. Okay?
Yeah, so I, the reason I did that is because I looked back through the other, um, no further subdivisions that we have done. And Lou is, um, interesting because he has the plat note recorded on the plat, and it's actually not in the resolution. But typically, we put it in the resolution. Um, and just because, like, the discussion that we had the last time is like, we understand we do not want these two lots to be, you know, no subdivided any further, but if the backlog gets combined with other properties, um, Planning Board would be willing to consider that. It would be a different kind of application. Um, but I, I think, um, it's, it's, speaks for itself in the resolution, and, um, we haven't typically required no further subdivision beyond the plat except for leases.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we've got the latest, uh, condition words that we want to use for that, okay? Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm good with this resolution. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on regarding the subdivision of this property at 859 Pierce Road?
So, so just to confirm, the only place where the restriction we mentioned will be in this resolution, not on any drawings or plans?
Yeah, and I mean, we certainly can, um... I don't...
I'm just asking, Laura. I'm, I'm okay. I'm just asking for clarity.
Because I don't know, um, we struggle a little bit with plat notes, and we've had this, um, come up before at planning boards before. It's like, how enforceable are plat notes? Um, and we could put it in both places, but I think for this one, it's okay to just leave it in the resolution, but it's okay to put it on the plat as what I, my understanding is too, except if you record it in the plat, the plaque gets recorded, right? The resolution is, are, is like how I can enforce things, but the plaque gets recorded, and I don't know if putting it on the plat could cause confusion in the future.
Okay.
I'll, I'll leave it to the planning office. Overcommunications, no problems, but I'll leave it to the planning office. Any other comments or questions or concerns regarding the resolution?
Well, I have the concern that it's only in the resolution that future owner won't know of the condition and that it may or may not be picked up if an application is made.
So, I, if, I mean, if you guys don't mind, it says that, you know, minor changes to the subdivision can be addressed to the satisfaction of the town planner. Um, I can just, you know, get with Alexis and just research if it should also be on the plat and, and just require that it be added on there prior to Kevin and Matt.
Um, yeah, that's fine with me, Laura.
So we can just double-check. Um, I had just researched it, you know, previously, and I think we, I mean, in Vincenzo, it was a little bit different because we were having to trigger major subdivision, and there was a lot of back and forth on, you know, what to put on the plat and stuff like that. But traditionally, we only put it in the resolution. But we can make sure that if it's better to put it on the plat, that we do. Um, that, you know, like, one of the things that's missing right now on that is a plat note about the Zoning Board of Appeals, um, variance. Kevin mentioned that. So, I mean, certainly, we're still adding plat notes, and if we do need to add that one, we absolutely can.
Great. Any other questions or comments? We have a resolution that's been moved and seconded.
I was just gonna agree that, I was gonna say that, um, I think we just need to make sure we're consistent, that if we're gonna consistently do this with all subdivisions, that we need to make sure that we're doing it either in both places or one place, and, and just be consistent.
To everyone, then it's fair.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, this is Hans Knight. Uh, is it appropriate for me to ask a question?
Sure.
Um, the, in order to subdivide, assuming that we do sub, the subdivision is successful, and if somebody else wanted to subdivide that property in the back, again, wouldn't they have to go through all the requirements that we had to go to, to subdivide?
They would, but we're, but we're don't, we don't want that to occur, so we're trying to prevent that opportunity. So parcel B and parcel A, uh, there won't be any future subdivision. So, um, so hopefully, they would read that either in the, the plat or in the resolution, and they wouldn't even make application.
Oh, okay. Now, the only thing that I can think that could possibly be a problem is, what if the zoning requirements change? And for some strange reason, a subdivision is allowable under the new zoning requirements? Or, uh...
Sorry, this is Alexis, Deputy Town Attorney. Just to jump in, I think that, so the purpose of the deed restriction that would prohibit future subdivision isn't that, it's not, it's not that that land could otherwise not be subdivided. It's just that in terms of a planning perspective, if we're gonna allow the subdivision to go forward, we want to be sure that it's not part of the larger common plan of development, which is hence why we're restricting, um, that parcel from being future subdivided, regardless of whether or not it's allowable under our provisions of our town code. So, um, you know, even if our town code was to change, I mean, that's, um, not relevant in so much as it's probably allowable right now for there to be a subdivision on parcel.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, yeah, all right, I assume you guys know what you're doing, so I have to, you know, acquiesce to that.
No. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing done. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Is it okay? This is Greg Gifford, uh, again. Um, is it appropriate for me to make a comment or ask a question?
Uh, might as well. I think it might be helpful. Go ahead.
Um, I think I just heard Laura Robertson, the planner, state that if the, um, if the parcel was added to another parcel, that this idea of it not being able to be subdivided again would go away. Is that what I heard?
That's correct. We had a discussion at the last meeting regarding that because there were some concerns about adding that no future subdivision note. Uh, so if it were to be combined with other land, then it would be a new application uh, to the Planning Board, and then we review it at that time. But that doesn't guarantee, obviously, that, that application would be approved and that a subdivision would occur, but you would have that potential.
Understood. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions from the applicant or from the board at all? Okay, Mr. Henry?
Mr. Laflamme. Uh, Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartland.
Aye.
Mr. Oster.
Aye.
Ms. Shenfield.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Hey, I believe, I know that the variance was granted, but still inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and it makes the lot substandard.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. Resolution's approved with one no vote. Okay? Um, and, uh, you know, just still some conditions for the Kennites to follow up on, you know, getting together with Laura and updating the plat so that you can continue on through the process of getting this recorded and finalizing the subdivision. Okay? All right, anything, anything else from the applicant before we move on?
No, I just want to say thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, all right, well, good luck with everything.
Thanks.
Okay, uh, next up, we have Resolution 2020-29, a resolution for site plan approval for a five-resident group home at 2465 McGovern Drive. And again, I'll summarize the resolution. Resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds the Center for Disability Services site plan referenced above meets the requirements of the zoning code and therefore hereby approves this site plan, subject to the following conditions. One, all cars shall be parked in an orderly manner in the driveway in order to maintain the residential character of the street and comply with Section 220-19H1 of the Code of the Town of Niskiuna, which states, "All street parking should not be permitted between the front building line and the street line, except in the driveways of residential lots." And condition number two, all garbage associated with said facility shall be maintained in an orderly manner that maintains the residential character of the street and complies with Section 163-3F Collection Container Placement, which states, "All containers used for private collection of garbage, rubbish, refuse, or recyclables that are required to be placed at curb sites shall be placed at the curb no earlier than 6:00 AM on the day prior to the day of collection and shall be removed from the curb no, no later than 6:00 PM on the day following the day of collection." And that's all the conditions. Do I have a motion for approval for 2465 McGovern Drive?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, that was moved by Mr. Scrubby Tennis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gold is what I heard?
Yes.
We can have some discussion. Um, first of all, you know, there's no project lead, I believe, on this. I just like to thank the applicant uh, for submitting the, uh, drawing, you know, delineating the parking and where the garbage would be stored that helped alleviate any of my concerns. Obviously, this is, um, I don't, um, we want to minimize any impact for the existing neighborhood, and I, and I believe we've done that, and I believe the applicant has supported that. So I think we're in pretty good shape. Um, does anyone else have any questions or concerns regarding this, uh, resolution? And does the, I know the applicant is online, a representative of the applicant. Do you have any questions or concerns about the conditions?
This is Tim Bartlett from the Center for Disability Services. Uh, no, I have no questions at all. I appreciate all your help with this. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. All right. All right, last call. Right, hearing no one. Oh, I do have one item, looking at my notes here. Laura, I guess this question's for you. Uh, the resolution states that, um, for the, uh, original drive, not the one that just came in, um, I think it was August nineteenth, the original one was stamped received August fourth, twenty twenty. Uh, looking through the packet, uh, the online packet, I didn't see any stamp received by the town of Missyuna. So I don't know if it's a different one that was scanned. Um, but, uh, you know, the resolution specifically says, um,
Yeah. That's because, um, the electronic ones, it was sent electronically to us, but the one in our files actually stamped. But for clarity, um, we could just remove that, um, a stamp, you know, if we wanted to, just do a quick amendment. Or, um, the paper copies in our office do have that stamp.
I mean, if the, if the reference copies have the stamp, you know, I know you always stamp things received, I don't have a problem. I just wanted to make sure it was clear since the package online, uh, didn't have that, okay?
Yeah, because it's nicer when the applicants send them to us electronically than us scanning them. It looks nicer. Um, so that, so this electronic one is not, I mean, it is the same, but it's, it doesn't have the stamp because we didn't.
I don't have a concern. I know that you stamp everything, so everything stamped, the, the, the reference copy that's on file is stamped, that's all counts, okay? Any other questions, comments, or concerns regarding McGovern Drive? Okay, hearing done. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Scrubutennis.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Sorry, it took a while to get on mute. Aye.
Mr. McPartland.
Aye.
Mr. Oster.
Aye.
Ms. Shenfield.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Hi. Resolution is approved and, um, thank again, thanks again to the applicant and look forward to having you in the neighborhood. All right.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, okay, next reso- resolution is resolution twenty twenty dash thirty, a resolution to make a recommendation to the town board for amendments to chapter two twenty entitled zoning of the code of the town of Missyuna. And again, um, summary of that resolution is resolved that this planning board and zoning commission recommends that the town board make amendments to chapter two twenty entitled zoning of the code for the town of Missyuna as shown on the sheets attached hereto to be made part thereof. All those amendments were, um, posted um, to the website and with something that we have been talking about for some time. Um, and those amendments conclude things such as, just for information here, definitions such as what an e-cigarette is, lot data that we talked about earlier in the neighborhood commercial zoning district, um, vehicle charging stations, you know, having them considered in certain, uh, applications, uh, temp signage, uh, temporary signage and controlling, uh, the size of temporary signs and, uh, non-visible fencing, um, dog, uh, what's called a dog electric fencing, uh, e-cigarettes and marijuana, nothing sold within a thousand feet of schools, et cetera. So those are types of things you'll find posted in the, uh, packet that's online. Um, do I have a motion for approval of this resolution to pass this on to the town board?
I make a motion.
Okay, moved by Mr. Khan. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
And that was seconded by Mr. Scrubutennis. Thank you. Any, uh, other discussion at all?
Chairman, just for the record, um, just gonna show really quickly. Whoops. These are our standard. Um. These are our standard, like, bulk zoning requirements, like retail stores, libraries, post offices, all uses within all zoning districts have these bulk requirements and, um, you know, sometimes the, they actually aren't consistent with, you know, places that develop pre-erzoning code, and so those are pre-existing non-conforming. And then sometimes, you know, new businesses that come in need variances because it doesn't quite fit. But I just think this is the situation here, and I don't think this occurs anywhere else in our code. There are none here. And so the danger of this is that a building, a, a, a new building that would come in could be built like on the property line or something, like there's, there's nothing there. It's highly unusual. I don't know why it's like that. And that wouldn't be something that would be deliberately done. I think it's just, um, sometimes these, uh, supplemental schedules are difficult to update or may have just gotten left out when neighborhood mixed-use building got added to the CN district. Um, but it shouldn't be adding a burden or creating problems for existing businesses. It's just, I think, a little bit scary not to have any requirements for any new mixed-use building that is built.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Laura. And, uh, and I also, I believe the town board, are they calling for the public hearing for these amendments tomorrow night?
Yes, they're calling for it and it would be held in September.
Okay, so for Ms. King or anybody else listening in, you will have another opportunity to be heard at the public hearing at the town board level for any of these zoning code amendments.
And Laura, just, just to clarify, the one about the, the electric dog fencing, that is, that is, that is going forward, correct? This is not going to affect everybody who has an existing dog fence, electric dog fence now?
Yeah, we can't go back. Um, that kind of just is what it is, but hopefully with a little guidance, we'll be able to notify people that they need a permit for the non-visible fence and help them install it a little bit better.
Okay, any other questions or comments regarding the resolution? Hearing done. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Scrubutennis.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartland.
Aye.
Mr. Oster.
Aye.
Ms. Shenfield.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Hi. Resolution passes and we'll move this on to the town board level. Again, they'll, they'll have their public hearing and a potential resolution, uh, after their public hearing. Uh, thanks. Okay, under new business again, we have our last item, which is a recommendation to the ZBA on thirty-four ten State Street. This is site plan approval for a permanent placement of a portable storage unit. Now, Mr. DRP knows the projects lead and isn't with us tonight, so I'm gonna try to lead the, uh, the discussion here. Uh, before I get started, because this is a little bit unusual, I'd like to have, ask one question of Ms. Kim. And that question is, um, if we make a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals, our recommendation may be a, uh, recommendation for, uh, a temporary approval of this accessory structure, uh, pending, um, some, uh, milestones by the applicant. I do, I do know that area variances run with the property. Uh, do we have a potential problem here that if the, uh, zoning board of appeals grants these area variances, is that, um, the, the storage container would be approved, would be my first question? My second question is, does the ZBA have the authority to grant a temporary, um, or a conditional uh, area variance for the storage shed so that we can move ahead with our recommendation?
Uh, so, sorry, one second. Taylor, can you just say, Taylor? Sorry, my daughter just hit her head. Um. Sorry. Um, so you said, if you, just to paraphrase your question, so the first one was whether or not the ZBA has authority to grant a conditional area variance?
That's correct.
The first question, so.
And the first question was, if they grant this area variance, you know, is that, is that gonna stay run with the property in perpetuity? Or will it only be, you know, again, conditioned, uh, based on our milestones and the applicant, um, moving forward with, uh, addition or whatever they want to do?
So, when they say that they run with the land, I mean, Laura, maybe you can jump in here. I mean, they, they run with the land in so much as that, that it.
I believe very strongly that you can condition, um, a variance, um, temporally, um.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's.
Needed. So if the planning board is really clear with their recommendation to the zoning board that they don't want it to be forever, the zoning board has the option of also kind of reverting the thing back as not to be treated as an accessory structure, to be treated as a pod. Uh, and they, I mean, like you saw that meeting, Kevin, um, you know, they, they could also just extend the ability for the person to, um, you know, apply for a, a temporary portable storage unit. Not really sure why they're called pods. Um, so, sorry, my cat. I, I, I think you could have a conditioned area variance. And, um, if there was really a concern, they can actually modify it and have it be, um, a temporary storage unit again if they needed to.
Yeah, that was my take. I just wanted to make sure we talked about it because it's quite a bit here. We want to move forward with the recommendation, making sure we're all clear that, um, you know, that, um, and, you know, we'll, we'll discuss it in a moment. But what we're looking, you know, based on the recommendation from Mr. DRP and on email from some time ago, is that we're looking at, uh, potentially recommending some milestones for the applicant to, uh, move forward with, um, uh, uh, in either addition or, you know, some other options on the piece of property to make this, uh, a nice piece of property, basically. I think if the applicant, my own opinion, I'll just speak for myself, if the applicant came to us and I want to leave that pod there, that forty-foot long pod along State, along, uh, Albany Street, I think it would be a tough one for this board to recommend that to stay. So, uh, we're going forward with a recommendation for a temporary, um, basically to leave it while, uh, we come through, uh, a site plan. Okay? All right, so.
And, and Laura and, uh, Chairman Walsh, just one question. Has there been any discussion, was the procedure for verifying the milestones are gonna be met once they've been set?
If I may, I think that's what we're gonna talk about next, and I think it's gonna be important that the, the planning department summarizes in a letter to the zoning board of appeals explicitly what those milestones are, so we're gonna need to add that discussion as part of this recommendation.
Right, and I mean, in addition to the milestones, it's also what the procedure is for verifying the milestones being.
Yeah, and you would also definitely want to put those in the site plan approval. It's important for the zoning board to understand where you're at and, and the applicant so that we're really clear about where we're going because site plan, um, essentially, almost, I mean, you can't approve, um, this without a variance, but site plan essentially trumps the zoning board. So, you know, like, even if they were like, okay, you can have this here, like, you guys can say, this is how it's gonna work because um, you're still in control of the commercial property through site plan. But you can't overrule the code the way that the zoning board can, right?
Okay. Any other questions before I get started? Okay, my plan is first, I'm just gonna summarize the, um, the denial, okay, if, if everybody could bear with me for a moment. All right, this is a property is located in a commercial, um, highway zoning district. And just for information, uh, we did, uh, planning board resolution twenty sixteen dash ten grant at thirty-four ten State Street, two principal uses, uh, retail and, uh, automotive sales. So there's two uses on the site, which is, uh, I, I guess I'd say is unusual. All right, so section two twenty dash thirty, portable storage units in temporary bulk waste containers of the town of Missyuna zoning code establishes requirements for temporary storage units and does not allow them to persist on the property beyond ninety days. In order for the commercial business to maintain the storage pod longer than ninety days, it requires site plan approval from the planning board and the units are treated as accessory structures. Also, section two twenty dash eighteen A general states, except as otherwise specified in this chapter, accessory structures are, structures are not permitted in the front yard of any lot. The lot at thirty-four ten State Street has fronts on State Street and Albany Street. As proposed, the pod, storage unit is located in the front yard along Albany Street, therefore a variance allowing a temporary accessory structure in the front yard is required. And section two twenty dash eighteen D, non-residential lots, unless otherwise specified, accessory structure shall comply with front, side, and rear yard setback requirements for the principal structure to which they are accessory, except that minor accessory structures may be as close as ten feet to the side or rear lot lines. Per schedule I E part two, setback requirements in the commercial highway zoning district are fifteen-foot front, fifteen-foot side, and twenty-foot rear for retail, and fifty-foot front, twenty-five-foot side, and forty rear for auto- automotive sales. As proposed, the drawings titled update seven seventeen twenty Seraphini Properties thirty-four ten State Streets connecting New York shows the front setback dimensions to Albany Street of five foot seven inch to one corner of the pod and eight foot eight inch to the other end of the forty-foot long pod. The side setback to thirty-four zero six State Street is shown as six foot six inch. Therefore, a front setback variance of forty-four foot five inches and a side setback variance of eighteen foot six inches are required. And that's because automotive sales, um, is the more restrictive use of the two uses on the properties. So that establishes the, uh, requirements or the need for the area variances based on the automotive sales. So that's why the extensive area variance is required. Okay? So that's, uh, that's, uh, what we're faced with and, um, Mr. Seraphini has made application for site plan. But in the meantime, we need to be able to allow this structure as we work through the site plan process. But there's three questions that we need to ask and, uh, to make our recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. And, uh, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll make the recommendations and I'll give everybody an opportunity to be heard, okay? So, effect on the comprehensive plan. I'm gonna propose that there is no effect on the comprehensive plan. I know that we go around with this sometimes, but basically, a, the area variances do allow for this to happen. Uh, so, and, um, so there is no effect on the comprehensive plan. So all those, um, if, I'm gonna state, all those in favor of saying there is no effect on a comprehensive plan, say aye, and if you have a comment, I'd be glad to hear it.
Aye.
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 I'm sorry, Kevin, you want to just state, though, in that comment that you feel that there's no effect on the comprehensive plan provided that the, um, container is temporary? Or do you want to, um, just say that, right, or whatever, there's really nothing in the comprehensive plan that addresses accessory structures in the front yard on the commercial highway district?
I'd be happy with it to say that, you know, because it's temporary, because that again will reinforce, um, the message to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Any other comments on that? Okay, so what I heard is that there is, no, no, and it's, uh, unanimous that there is no effect on the comprehensive plan. Last call on that. Okay. So the next, uh, question is suitability for use in the area proposed, and this one's gonna be a little bit tougher, okay? So I'm gonna propose that it's not suitable. We have a large forty-foot pod on the front street, Albany Street. And so I am gonna propose that it's not suitable, and, um, and here's, here's, here's why. I'll give some, and Laura can help you out with this, um, you know, tomorrow as a follow-up also if we need to. So there's, there's few things here, and I don't know if they all apply, but basically, a, the neighborhood has to look at this, so it's not suitable. You know, there are homes along, this is a front yard along Albany Street and people have to look at it. So that's one of the, the major, uh, concerns that I have. Uh, another concern is that it's large, uh, this container. Uh, you know, it's not, uh, keeping with a typical pod or a small storage unit. This is a pretty good-sized thing. So I, I, you know, so I believe it's visually and physically large, okay? I believe it's self-created. Uh, uh, I know it's a business need, but it truly was self, self-created and it was admitted to by the applicant. And I think it's a substantial request, um, for the, uh, zoning board of appeals because of, because the automotive sales dictates the area variance. And we're looking at a forty-foot five-inch, um, setback, uh, variance, so I think it's substantial. Uh, I'd also like to add, and again, Laura, I'll help you with all this, there are alternatives, right? Uh, alternatives like smaller units, uh, multiple units, different location. Uh, uh, in addition to the structure, which I believe is where we're headed, uh, or maybe possibly even drop the dual use of the property so that you could minimize the variance by, uh, going with retail only, uh, which would, uh, minimize the, the variance even for this large pot. So for all those reasons, um, I believe that it is, uh, not suitable. Anybody else have any things that I may have missed or comments? Okay. All right, all those that feel it's not suitable for the, the reasons I stated, uh, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any, any? Anyone have a different, uh, view that I missed? Okay, so it looks like, uh, the recommendation on suitability for use, that is not suitable, right? And now it comes time for our recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. Let me see if I can capture this the best I can, right? So we want to make a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals that they allow this pod as a temporary structure, um, for up to one year from the date of approval of the zoning board of appeals and I, that they take action, okay? Um, with the, uh, conditions that, um, um, that the applicant, and this is per Mr. DRPino's recommendation some time ago in an email, that there's two, two six-month milestones. Again, starting with the date of, uh, of the potential approval of a zoning board of appeals. The first milestone would be that the applicant, uh, within six months. The first milestone would be that the applicant, within six months, I'm suggesting submit site plan drawing map, so he can work down the prices, process of site plan within six months. So he would have to hire an engineer, you know, go through the whole process to architect or engineer and then come in with the, his plan to handle this, whether that be in addition, changes to the structure or whatever to alleviate this pod within six months. And then I suggest within the year, the second six month period, that, that the engineering be complete in that we have site plan approval for the, for the applicant to go forward with whatever action they plan on taking to resolve this issue. Alright? I know that's not simple, but I think we could also include in the recommendation that he would be on the agenda for discussion at the planning board meeting at any meetings close, close to that six month milestone dates. So, you know, so if it's a couple of weeks away, it could be, you know, either the meeting before or the meeting after at the planning department's direction. If the, if the applicant does not execute the milestones or basically, you know, and I don't foresee this happening, but if they were to drop the ball and not take any action or not, you know, come to the board and continue down the process of site plan, then I would, I would suggest that the storage unit not be in compliance and be subject to removal. So, you know, we're serious about that site plan and about not allowing this storage container forever. Now, it should also be noted, just for information, that when the applicant comes to us with whatever site plan that they're proposing that we need to work through, for instance, if it were in addition, in addition, based on this lot and the lot dimensions, could also be an issue that we may have to send this back to the zoning board of appeals for another area variance in order to complete the site plan approval. So we just want to make clear that we understand that that may happen based on the restrictions and dimensions and location of this lot with two front yards and so on and so forth. We understand that. Obviously, we're always going to try to minimize any variance requests by working with the applicant. Does that sound reasonable, what I'm proposing?
Mr. Chairman, just I just want to ask a question here. Let's say it's not in compliance as you're looking through the six month period, look at the next one. What is the remedy in that circumstance? Is it for them to actually make in the compliance or if they don't? Is it they have, they'll get fined a certain amount for every day that it's still up and it's been, you know, I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is how do you then make sure that if it's not in compliance and there's not an intent to comply, that, that it can all be taken down and whatever goods are being stored in it can also be safely moved out of it?
Well.
Would, yeah, you, like a building inspector would go out there and if, you know, if everything's written right, it would be a notice of violation because the applicant would be in violation of the approvals. A notice of, and then a typical notice of violation gives you a certain timeframe for coming into compliance. So like, you know, to answer your question, it's actually both, like they get a certain timeframe to, to come into compliance. So like if within, if maybe they had the plans but forgot to like send them to us, we give them a notice of violation and they can submit plans to us within seven days that are appropriate for the planning board to review, great. If we give them like seven days to address the notice of violation and they do nothing, then fines start to accumulate. So yeah, so then fines would accumulate and they would have to go, you know, to court.
Right, but that's all well and good. But is ultimately the remedy that the thing would be forced to be taken down?
Well, yeah, we also have the ability to abate the violation and they're not exclusive. So while we could, you know, pursue fines that would be each day that the violation continues is deemed a separate offense. We also have the ability to go on to the property after the, the abatement period and, and abate the violation with, you know, usually we hire somebody to do that. And then the failure to pay for that cost is deemed a lien on the property for purposes of our ability to collect against that for those expenses.
So I'm just, I'm not a hundred percent sure that that would work on this property because there's some things in there that may not, there may be other laws governing things on that property that we're not aware of. But typically we can go on to the property and/or we give the applicant seven days to remove it or submit the plans and then they're subject to fines.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just a little uncomfortable with given what potentially could be stored there, that it's going to be that easy to take it down in the event that they're not following what needs to be followed.
Well, the violations, I mean, I'm not saying we don't want to presume that there's going to be a non-compliance, but the violations are covered by our, the penal code. So like, I mean, in the event that it was that serious, I mean, there's been instances where the failure to comply has given us the ability to issue a warrant for an arrest. So I mean, that usually gets somebody's attention pretty quickly.
Yeah, I, I, I guess what I'm saying is ultimately, but then ultimately you're going to need to have the thing come down. So like here we're like basically giving authorization for this thing to be up for a certain period of time. And yes, you want, and you hope that, you know, that they're going to do what you want them to do. But ultimately, if they, if they don't, then we're going to want to have it come down.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's typical of anything that we see. I mean, it was actually cited before it came to you guys. And it was his choice to pursue coming for site plan approval, right? So I mean, I think, you know, neighbors who, who get frustrated with, you know, a vacant home or something that's not in compliance, I think they get a little frustrated that the, the moment the notice of violation expires that the, you know, that it's not addressed. It's a, it's a timely process. If, if there's a notice of violation and they don't remove it, I mean, it takes a long time to either go through court. I mean, if they're really fighting us, it takes a long time. That, but that's, that's it. Like you have to understand that, you know, that, that's the process. There is a way to remove it, but it's not overnight. But I mean, for sure, you know, there's, there's steps that we go through that achieve eventual compliance. It's just, they're long, they take a long time. Applicants are given certain deadlines, you know, they can appeal, they can go to court. It does take a long time. But for sure, the town can achieve compliance on that, you know, if, if there is an issue, it's just not an overnight thing. And it wouldn't be anyway. Like if you guys, you know, if you guys had said, we don't even want to look at this, we're not going to work with the applicant at all, he needs to get rid of it. It would still be, you know, a timely process to work through.
Mr. Chairman, I've got another issue. The way we've structured the two, the, the two windows, the two six month periods of time is, is divorced really from the development path. So we've given the applicant a year's worth of time to go through the municipal planning approval process. And then at the end of a year, presumably they would pull, pull a building permit, engage contractor, go to bid. There's another year behind this. So we've actually, by limiting our, our two six month windows, we're only tying it to our schedule independent of the critical path, which there's another year or perhaps eighteen months for, for an applicant to find financing, find a contractor, plans and specs, go to bid. I'm a little concerned about the backend because there is another timetable. We're not even taking it into account.
That, that's a good comment. And I, I was, where I came up with this two six month periods was from an email some time ago from Mr. DRPino. Unfortunately, he can't be with us tonight. You know, if, 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 if in one year we were to grant site plan approval, obviously Mr. Scrubby Tennis, you'd have to hire his contractor and then do construction. So that would mean the pod would be there longer than, could be there longer than one year. But sooner or later to execute that construction, that pod's going to have to go away because that could be the potential footprint for the new building. You know? So it's something that I, I don't know, you know, I'm open for suggestions if there's a better way.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to discuss this a little bit more, right? I mean, by definition, assuming that the planning takes the length of the one year. But let's say on the, on the beginning of the following year, everything is approved to do the construction. Right? We would expect that that construction would happen in a timely manner, which by definition means, means the pod gets removed.
Yeah.
Then would we want to, would we want to tie the second six month window at the end of that six month, the applicant would have to have a building permit? We would want them to commence construction no later than a year, not, you know, we don't want to give the applicant another eighteen months to proceed with a construction timetable on their own, at their own benefit, at their own desires, at their own schedule.
So for the, for the second six month period, the, so one year from the approval of the ZBA, we could say that the applicant, you know, pull a building permit versus have site plan approval. The other thing, the other opportunity that we do have, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, is when we grant, and if we grant site plan approval, couldn't we condition at that point in time also a construction schedule or any concerns also?
That's a good solution. Yeah, that's good.
So I think we have, I think we have an opportunity. One thing I'd like to do is, is Mr. Seraphini online? I think he is.
He's here. Yes, I am.
And I know you've been listening, so I'd like to hear your thoughts and see if we're missing something or causing some hardship that we're not aware of.
Well, obviously I understand the concerns that the board faces with my unusual situation. And, you know, I can give you a couple of generalities specifically to Mr. Oster's concerns. You know, I've been in front of this board many times with the different changes to this property as my business has developed. And as far as I'm aware and hopefully the board confirms with this, I have never failed to provide to you anything that we've agreed to. So while I do understand that you have to deal with the overall ramifications, you know, I'd, I'd like to think that there's some, you know, positive goodwill there and my intents on everything. That said, you know, obviously anything that has to do with construction is going to, you know, be controlled by the banks for financing. You know, the ability to get a construction move in there to do the work. I have no problem having timeframes in place for that. I think it's more than reasonable. Especially, you know, if the, the board does decide to, you know, grant me some latitude with what I need to make this happen. What I would like is something that says from the time of final approval for a, you know, for our plans or whatnot, that I have X amount of time to get that, that building permit applied for and we're commencing. You know, something that is reasonable because if we say that, you know, we're supposed to have everything lined up and we don't have a final approval yet, I would be a fool to have a construction crew waiting to start work tomorrow with the potential that the approval won't be in place. So, you know, anything that you do, I just ask that, you know, you preface it with reasonable timeframe for me to make it happen. And from there, I will make it happen.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Seraphini. Yeah, Mr. Scrubby Tennis, you know, that's a good comment you have. Because actually the timing, let's say the ZBA, we're making a recommendation, I believe it would be on the September ZBA meeting. So just the way it falls out with two six month periods, one year, would probably be in the, close to the fall of twenty twenty one. And it may be tough to start construction because it might be, you know, getting close to the winter, you know, by time to get things lined up. So that would, you know, obviously mean that the pod would have to stay possibly till spring of twenty twenty one, right? Like, like my math is right, somewhere in there. So, so the pod could be there, you know, longer than a year. But I do believe that in our final site plan approval, that we'd have the flexibility to add some conditions to control to make sure that this moves along. I guess that's the only thing I can say.
I, I guess just to add, I appreciate what Mr. Seraphini had to say. I guess our, our end goal is not a land use planning approval. Our end goal is the transformation of this property and the erection of this pot. So I just want to make sure we're on the same page. If we need more time to complete that, I, I, I I would understand, it sounds sensible, but I just don't want us to think that our victory is just when we, when we obtain approvals because it's really the completion of project.
Correct. That, that's a good comment. Well taken. Yes. I mean, basically, and maybe Mr. Seraphini, I don't know if he said, discussions with engineers, has any thought of where he's going? But the bottom line is, is that we want the pod gone and we're trying to be flexible to help the applicant and help a, a business in Niskiuna to stay, stay afloat, you know, and to be able to execute their mission until such time that they're ready to do an expansion is what we're contemplating, but that may not be, that may not be the answer. Mr. Seraphini might relocate. Again, he has lots of options relocating, an addition, a, a different type of storage structure. We, you know, as, as mentioned earlier, dropping one of the two uses of the property such as the automotive to make the zoning less restrictive. That's up to him to, to recommend where he's going. And I think the first milestone basically gives him that six months to do drawings or work with an engineer to make that decision on where, where he's going.
If I could weigh in again?
Yes, sir.
I can let you know, I have an engineer who's already working on it. And what he's doing is he is actually going through with multiple sets of plans, one of which dropping the multi-uses, one of which continuing with the multi-uses, you know, laying out everything that we could conceivably find as different variables for how we would set it up. And then, you know, of course, there, there's going to need to be some discussion with planning and zoning because there is basically nothing we can do to this property without some sort of variances and, you know, approvals. So I do have somebody actively working on it and, you know, obviously for me as a business, Mr. DRPino had come in and taken a look. I have definitely maximized my use of space. So time is of the essence to me because I need to be able to grow my business at a time when it's growing for me.
Yep. Yeah, and we're sensitive to that. And, you know, I know that once you do your matrix of all your different, different options, obviously cost is one of those considerations which might drive, you know, whether you stay in Niskiuna or, you know, relocate or build a building somewhere else, whatever. Again, that's your decision. But we're trying to get, you know, help you to get to that point so you can make that decision. And, and our goal as Mr. Scrubby Tennis point, the real end goal is that we don't like the pod. We probably would not give a recommendation for it to stay there. At least that's my personal opinion. And we, I know we'd like to have you stick around and hopefully take the path of an addition that suits your business needs.
Absolutely. And, and, you know, frankly, that's my preferred method as well. You know, again, I do have a couple of alternatives to the pod in the short term. But sadly, none of them are visually appealing. Frankly, I think they look worse than the pod. So, you know, that, that was my lesser of the evils, but at the end of the day, they were still evils.
Okay, so regarding the two six month periods, I think that requires a little more discussion based on some of the comments I just heard. Those are just suggestions that I threw out, the first six month milestone being that the plans, the plan or when I say plans, it could be a, a drawing, it could be, hey, I'm, you know, going away with the pod. Hey, I'm, I'm relocating, whatever, whatever the, the path that the applicant is going to take on the property is what I was expecting personally at that first six month period. If the ZBA agrees with those. Is that everybody else's understanding? Is everybody else okay with that? Because I think that's what Mr., again, Mr. DRPino's not here, but I think that's what his thought was when he had a discussion with Mr. Seraphini from the email. That's what I, what I took out of it. Right? So that, so then at that point in time, the applicant just walked through this, he would come back to the, to the planning board and we'd review where he's headed and give him some feedback. Hopefully, you know, we hear all the right things. There may be a sketch that may require, again, the zoning board of appeals action that we may have to recommend or negotiate with the applicant to minimize that before we make a recommendation so he can go forward. That's what I envisioned for the first six months. Then I would expect, you know, possibly, you know, the ZBA taking action and the applicant going off doing some engineering, whatever, based on the next ZBA action and then coming in at the end of the one year with a, a package that allows us to give site plan approval with any variances required in place for the business to go forward, which of course would, would include removal of that pod, as Mr. Scrubby Tennis stated. And then at that resolution, at final site plan, at the one year period, if we have any conditions, because it's based on the time of the year or something else that has come up in the meantime, at that point in time, we could ensure that any concerns for ourselves or the, to fit with the residential character of Albany Street or whatever it may be are included in conditions in our final site plan approximately one year. It can always be sooner, by the way. Mr. Seraphini doesn't have to wait for the year. We're just going to give him a year. If he can do all this sooner, we know, obviously we'd all appreciate it.
And would we reserve the right at the end of that one year to impose other milestones for development, Mr. Chairman?
I, I don't see why not, just like we do any conditions on any resolution. You know, you know, like, obviously if, if one of the answer, if, if a potential answer is construction on the site and the pods in the wrong spot, because that might be a, a prime location to extend the building, Mr. Seraphini. Uh, Mr. Seraphini may have to relocate the pod on this existing site. Or come up with another means of storage to our satisfaction and his satisfaction. That allows the work to go forward. So that's things that we, we consider during the site plan approval process. I know this isn't an easy one and I, I'm not trying to say I know all the answers, cause it is, uh. I'm sure something will come up sooner or later that we're gonna need to work through. Uh, but again, I think the goal here was, uh, you know, to try to help out the, uh, the business. And recognizing again, and I, I don't, I believe I speak for the board that there's concerns with the pod. And most likely we would not recommend it to the zoning board of appeals. And most likely, um, uh, zoning board of appeals would consider it the same as, uh, you know, an eyesore. And in the front yard along Albany Street. Can't speak for them, but that would be my, my guess. Okay. Uh, I just, I, I just wanted to defer to Laura or the deputy town attorney. Is there anything you think I've missed or any concerns with this thought process that, uh, could get us in trouble?
Looks good on my end. I'm not sure about you, Laura.
No, I think it's good. And I think understanding that there's kind of these two six months for the approval process. And then there's gonna be, you know, site plan approval that's gonna moderate the construction. Is important. And I think we should also pass that on to the zoning board, just so that they kind of understand that timeline too. I mean. I attend both meetings, Greg will be there, the neighbors get notified. So that'll be the first time really that we hear from neighbors. But. I think probably like, so I've got, so in the. Recommendation that you're talking about Kevin, I've got two, I've got allow the pod with the two conditions and then. That you. That, you know, that if you don't execute the milestones, the unit is subject to removal and that it's really important to the planning board that that does not stay there forever. So I think that should be in the zoning board recommendation. And I, and I heard you say that you also wanted your recommendation and acknowledgement that any addition to the structure may require area variances. And then the final thing that we kind of put in that recommendation is that we would control or. Discuss and control construction timeline for final approval through planning board site plan approval.
Yeah, that's correct, Laura. And, uh, I, and I, and I stress, uh, and, uh, I know that you prepare these letters to the zoning board of appeals. Thank you. And I stress that you utilize the word temporary throughout the letter. Anytime talking about the pod, the temporary, uh, approval, the temporary, uh, location, et cetera. Uh, we're, by no means are we suggesting that the zoning board of appeals approve this pod permanently.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and Laura just verified, one of the things you said there, which I'm hoping you're not gonna write is you're not gonna say that. We don't wanna see it be there forever, right? I think you'll rephrase that, uh. Reflect that we do wanna see it there temporarily only.
Yeah. And we recognize temporary is gonna be at least one year. Uh, and, and if the applicant.
Well, it's one year plus some reasonable construction.
Right, at a minimum, yeah. Well, unless the applicant, you know, is able to get things done within nine months, which would be great, but, uh, we know that it, it takes time. All right. So, uh, that was a good summary. And so what I'm gonna do is we haven't voted yet. I'm gonna say that as far as, um, recommendation. Is that we recommend the zoning board of appeals. Temporarily grant the area variances required to allow the pod to stay onsite through the site plan review process. With the milestones that were previously stated, two milestones, one at, at six month. Regarding the, um, uh, submission by the applicant of the path they plan on taking for commensurate review by the planning board. And a final site plan occurring, uh, at the second six month period within a year of the ZBA approval. Uh, so I rec, I recommend that. Uh, a- all those in favor of that recommendation signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 And I'd love to hear from anybody that may be opposed. Okay. All right. Hearing no one opposed, Laura will draft the letter. Uh, I'll be glad to, to review it. Uh, I do have some notes here. Obviously we have the video to help us out, which is great to make sure we capture, uh, our concerns in the letter to the zoning board of appeals. I believe this will be scheduled for the September meeting. And I believe the zoning board of appeals will also have the opportunity, if they wanna add any condition to tighten it up. If they have any thoughts, you know, we always welcome their comments also. And, uh, based on that, uh, and the outcome of that ZBA meeting. Uh, then, uh, we'll, uh, continue down the process or not continue down the process based on the zoning board of appeals actions from Mr. Seraphini's application. That sound good? Got some nods. How about Mr. Seraphini? Okay with that?
Absolutely. I just wanna take an opportunity to say thank you again to the board for, uh, understanding the challenges that I face and. Helping me to continue to grow my business in Niskiuna.
Yep, I think. I think this is a, a noble effort by the, the planning board, uh, to work with you and, uh. We look forward to, uh, working through the process, uh. And, um, please keep Mr. Diarpino, um, uh, tied in, uh, you know, call, uh, Mr. Diarpino, Laura Robertson, planning office anytime. You're also welcome to contact me to help along the process to make sure we keep this moving along, okay?
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. So that concludes that recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. And, uh, we'll see how that works out. Any other questions or comments regarding that action? Okay, we're all set then. So we'll close the new business portion. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate that. And we'll move on to discussion, discussion item being twenty-five thirty-eight River Road, Kelts Farm, average density development, major subdivision. Now, Mr. Diarpino and Mr. McPartlin are project leads. Obviously we have, don't have Mr. Diarpino tonight. So I don't know if we wanna start out with Mr. McPartlin. One suggestion that I have is that there, um, you know, is, I believe included in the packet or maybe in an email, I'm not even sure. Yeah, it was in the packet. Is that Laura did capture some of the notes, things that we need to discuss. Uh, any suggestion, Mr. McPartlin on that? How you'd like to handle that?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, um, which specific note are you referring to?
Uh, I think it was in the agenda statement, uh, Ms. Robertson summarized, um, uh, after reviewing revision eight of the site plan. They recommend discussing with several items. We could just go down that list and then we could add anything else that we need to talk about. And included in that list are comments such as that we heard at, uh, privilege of the floor too. So I think that would cover anything that we heard. That's on the other way.
I can take us through that discussion then. Um, item number one is, um. A, uh, suggestion that, um, I believe comes out of, has come out of the complete streets committee. To improve pedestrian circulation throughout this specific development. So. Whereas the multi-use path currently takes a path from Windsor Drive to River Road toward the south. Southeast, um, that leaves out a few homes on the cul-de-sac portion of Kelts Farm Road. Um, which, um, we could also put on the multi-use path. Another thing to consider with that point is just that, um. It's connected, county planner did have an issue with the risk of pedestrians attempting to cross River Road. At the pro- proposed location of the emergency access. But, uh, it's possible that we will just need to remove that emergency access anyway. Subject to his notes.
How about we just stick with, uh, item number one, which is extending the multi-use path up to the cul-de-sac? I believe I saw a couple of emails where the thought process for the project's leads was that they didn't see a need. Based on the cul-de-sac, the minimum number of homes and, and the proximity of the bike path. Uh, to the end of the cul-de-sac. In other words, it wasn't a lot of footage there. Was that your position from the partland to not be extended to the cul-de-sac?
I, I think it has to, it's a part and parcel of the conversation regarding the emergency access. Um, certainly we wouldn't want to direct pedestrians. Toward that emergency access and if there's a risk that they will be attempting to cross River Road. However, there's a good number of homes, um, on that cul-de-sac and why shouldn't they have, um. Multi-use path. If, if we're building from the ground up. Um, so. Uh, provided that there is no emergency access, I would actually be in favor of extending the multi-use path into the cul-de-sac.
I, I would just like to agree with Mr. McPartlin on one thing. I think those two items are linked. And I don't think we can properly decide on one without consideration of the other. Because the key now has to do with flow of pedestrian traffic. Including a recommendation by the county about removing that emergency access that's depicted.
Okay. Well, I'll tell, tell you where I stand. To me, um. I'm okay either way. I'll be honest with you. Extending it to the, uh, you know, the top of the, the cul-de-sac to, you know, support those homes at the end. Or based on the distance, you know, leaving as is, I could go either direction. I, I guess I don't have a, a hard spot either way personally.
Hey, Kevin, this is Joel. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Joel.
Do I get a vote in this?
Uh, you get the comment.
Okay, um. It's a cul-de-sac and only the people that live there are gonna be traveling there. And. It's not a hardship for them to walk in the street a couple hundred feet to get to the bike path. I don't think it's a great idea to extend that bike path all over and, uh. I agree with the county that. We should take out the emergency access and just. Consider the bike path as the emergency access. We'll give, we'll give the town an easement for the, for the water line. But, um, basically. That does make sense that i- if you extend the bike path towards the cul-de-sac too, and if you kept that emergency access, then, then people would definitely, most definitely. Use that as a path. You know, so we wanna discourage people from going over that way. So. And we want them to cross where they're supposed to cross. So. I would say lead the bike path as is and take the emergency access out as Paul Sheldon. And Joe requested and use the bike path as the emergency access.
Okay, thank you, Joel. Yeah, um, and we did hear a comment tonight regarding the emergency access. Suggestion made by Mr. Sheldon. Certainly that sounds like. A great idea. I don't think he, um. Was privy to a lot of the discussion on that and the public comment. And so. Um, I guess I would just want to defer to town council regarding.
Well, Dave, uh, Dave called me earlier today at function and could pick it tight and he was against, um. Extending the bike path to the cul-de-sac and. He wanted to remove the emergency access and use the bike path. As the access. I thought he communicated with you guys.
Yeah, we rece- we received an email and it was posted on the website and, uh, all the planning board members have Mr. Sheldon's email. Again, again, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm flexible. Uh, I know that, um. Uh, it is only, I don't know how many feet from the existing, uh, the proposed bike path. To the, uh, you know, to the first home or the, or, or to the, at least the beginning of the cul-de-sac where it rotates there.
About a hundred.
Far. And it's probably not much traffic. Um, so that's why I can go either way personally, but I, you know, gotta leave it to the board. Um, as far as the bike path goes, um, as far as extending the bike path. As far as the emergency, utilizing the existing or proposed bike path over the Windsor as an emergency, um. Uh, I mean, I think we were there at one time. Um, my assumption is, is that that's not a problem because, um, you know, it's not a road. Uh, and it's, it's gonna have a gate across it. Uh, similar to Lori Drive, you know, where Lori Drive is, you know, at, at this point in time. You know, Lori Drive has a road that connects over to, uh, Lori Drive to, um, lots of Lori Drive, I believe Lori Drive extension over to that development. With the crash gate there for emergency use. So it would be similar to what we see over there right now. If that's okay. I mean. You know, uh.
So, so, so I'd just like to, you know, g- going back to the principle that Laura was using when she itemized the list of things for us to discuss, Laura. I, I disagreed with the sequence on the list a little bit. Right? Because the key thing is that, so what I'd like to. Ask a pointed question on. Based on the county's recommendation, is there any way the emergency access can stay as depicted on this drawing?
No, because the county would have. The say for what happens in the right of way. They don't really, I mean. They don't have a say really in what happens on the private lot. So they couldn't say town, you can't take an easement between those two lots for emergency access. Um, but they can say you can't build it in the right of way. So, and they can say like. We, we don't want it so much that we can put like a swale there or something that you wouldn't even be able to drive over. I mean. I don't think that they would do that. Um, but they would not, I don't think. Appreciate it if we didn't like listen to them. About sightlines.
So based on your answer, as depicted, a paved emergency access between those two lots. Lots three and lot twenty-four, as depicted in the drawing, cannot occur. Now, I thought at some point we were talking.
In the right of way.
Just a, just a reinforced. Grass covered area for emergency access. Sort of around there. Is that still?
So we can ask them because that's obviously not going to invite as much pedestrian traffic. But the, the con- the concern they have, which is written in his. Recommendation is the sightlines, although like the time that an emergency vehicle is gonna be using it, it doesn't seem like sightlines is gonna be a huge issue. But again, we would be subject to them saying, okay, if it were grass and. And the other thing is if you plow it, um, even if it is grass, if it's plowed. Um, that still may invite pedestrian traffic, cause we'll be like, oh, why are we plowing through the two property?
Right. And, and so Joel, I guess this is a question for you. I know you know that we've had this discussion about this being some for, some sort of. Reinforced surface with grass. You obviously had a reason why you made it paved. So do you wanna let us know what you were thinking about there?
Well. I kinda agree with Paul's note number two is that, well. You know, they're saying that they don't wanna have the brick pavers that let the grass grow up to them. They said either grass, uh, gravel, dirt. Or, uh, blocktop or concrete. So like Laura said. If you do put that, if you put that in, people are gonna use it. I mean, you know, people are gonna use it definitely to walk across it or bike across it to get to the pavilion. Without a doubt, without a doubt, I guarantee it. So I really didn't think about that, but that's, that's a really valid point. You know, and when we put the multi-use path in, it's already ten foot wide, you know, and I mean. We, we would stone it at least twelve foot wide. And, you know, the filter fa- the fa- the stabilization fabric's that wide. So. It'll, it'll support, you know, the fire, the, the emergency access vehicles as is. I don't, I don't really like the idea of gates like on Lori, you know what I mean? But. I really, it's hard for me to imagine some jerk, uh. Driving all that way from, from, uh, Windsor Drive to Kelts Farm Road loop, you know, with a. On the bike path, but I guess somebody would do it, but. I, I don't like the idea of a gate myself. Just from aesthetics, but if.
How about a, how about a gate at River Road on the existing emergency access as depicted?
I think you'd need them at both ends, cause what if somebody gets brave and decides, well, I'm gonna. I'm gonna drive down the bike path, you know what I mean, from Windsor?
No, I mean, going back to the emergency access point only, just on that line item. A gate at the right of way on River, on a River Road. On the emergency access path as depicted. And not just a.
Oh, I see your point. Yeah.
I don't think the issue is cars with the emergency access.
No, no, right. And so I'm at the gate in which a person can't walk through.
No, I. I can, I get people walking around the gate and crossing the road there. I mean, I would do it.
You know.
But if it's somebody's, somebody's yard, you put up bushes, a fence, you know, they're, they're not gonna do it.
You know, one thing we gotta remember for the emergency access, which we have consistently been doing in, in recent subdivisions. And we wanna be consistent with this subdivision is that the town, uh, it, it should be maintaining them, right? As we just discussed. Now they typically plow or snow blow the bike path, the multi-use path. I know they do like along the River Road front of capital and everything. So, you know, so that there's a, an advantage to the town, uh, if that can be utilized as the emergency, uh, access point. It wouldn't be for, uh, regular ingress egress. And that's why, you know, the proposed proposal is to have a gate similar to Lori Drive or something. So that, uh, you know, discourages, uh, uh, and again, it's only emergency, not for through traffic.
I'm sorry. I disagree with that.
Can people walk around the Lori Drive gate?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And they do.
Yeah.
And bike around it, yep.
Yeah, I mean, the Lori Drive gate is just a single pole crash gate, right, so it invites pedestrian traffic actually. And prevents. It prevents vehicular traffic. Except for emergency vehicles.
Then I, then I, I could go along with that then, that's no problem.
I'm sorry, but I have to disagree with the idea. Of using the multi-use pathway for the emergency access. People. Are out walking or biking with their. Pods. You're not listening for traffic, you're not gonna hear it, it's dangerous. Not to mention people who actually don't hear might well be using that pathway. I think the. Whether it's a paved surface with grass on top of the wall. Going back out to River Road. I think is the only way to go. I think it's important that there be a secondary access. So emergency use only is fine. But I think we need something real. And that doesn't endanger those using the multi-use pathway.
Well, my, my view is it's not gonna endanger, endanger if we have an emergency situation, they only have sirens and so on and so forth, and they're trained responders. If you have a, a, a emergency thing on, on, out to River Road. And as Joel just pointed out, and the town or the county pointed out, people would walk on that anyway, so it's still the same problem. Um, yes, maybe not as great as a multi-use path, but, uh, I think, I think we can come around that, you know. Um, as long as it's the right thing to do.
I also think that the choice of that pathway is inconsistent with the town board resolution.
To what Leslie said, um. Do we have any other spots around Iskina that we can think of where the, the, even the Hudson Mohawk, you know, walk bike path? Is also an emergency access point? Where this has become an issue at all? I'm just trying to think where it has, where it is considered an emergency access to some location, um, and there's ever been an issue.
I'll defer to Laura, you know, cause I don't have the details, but if you go down like Lot Seven Road, even though the bike path there. Along, uh, where Lot Seven Road crosses the bike path. There are gates on both sides, and I believe if somebody gets hurt on a bike path. Is that the emergency responders go down the bike path to, to, um. Tend to the injury or whatever, uh, issue has occurred. So I believe emergency responders have gone down the bike path, if that's what you're asking. And Mr. Khan's nodding his head, I mean, I think that's typical. People do get hurt on the bike path. Especially those people with all those earbuds on and, on bikes and not getting out of the way. I know there's been, uh. There has been accidents that I'm aware of, people, you know, running into each other and getting hurt. What does the board think? So, kinda, we got kind of two things we're working on here at the same time, you know, extending the, the bike path. Uh, and it sounds like, uh. Uh, the recommendation from Mr. McPartland is at least extend the bike path. Uh, to the, to the cul-de-sac or just to capture a couple of homes. Again, I, I'm okay, I, I kinda, I kinda agree with Joel on this one. I think it's so close, it's, it's only so many feet. Um, I, you know, you gotta remember, if you extend the bike path to the cul-de-sac and you don't go around and you just stop it, the town has to maintain it. Um, and, um. And it, right now, the way the, the bike path is laid out, or the hike bike path is laid out, it's a natural, you know, uh. Sequence for the town to be able to snow blow and everything. Uh, that's just my thoughts, again, I'm, I'm just hopeful, but that's just my thought.
And Darkino's against extending it too, Kevin.
Yeah, I don't feel strongly one way or the other, I just. I, if we were going to, which is the recommendation from CAC. Um. Thought that excluded, um. The grass pad, but.
Yeah.
But it sounds like a grass pad or any type of emergency access, um, off a river. Is out of the question.
Yeah. W- w- with all due respect to Mr. Chairman and the board. I, I, I think making a decision about extending the. Multi-use path to the cul-de-sac. Is actually. Secondary, tertiary, or maybe a little bit irrelevant at this point. I think the important thing is what are we gonna do with emergency access?
Yeah, well, I agree, that's on the list, you know, we're just going on the list, right?
Based on the county recommendation. That the emergency access to River Road as depicted cannot be there. Then we have to put it someplace else.
Exactly.
And, and. Obviously, we know. What the spirit and intent was of the town board. In their resolution. And we know what the thoughts are of the few residents who spoke. Um. I think the residents see some. Precedential danger of making. Emergency vehicular access on that bike path. As setting a precedence for a future roadway. If I can, if I hear clearly what they say. And so. And so I'm gonna ask this question at this point, since the town board has taken lead on. The. Blocking of a vehicular path. Do we have the ability to raise this back to a town board decision? Let the town board figure out where to put the emergency path.
No, I mean. I mean, I don't think it would be appropriate to be sending it back to the town board in that the town board was making this decision on a resolution issuing a special use permit, so. I'm not sure the disposition to which this would ever go back to the town board. Unless it was, you know, for some reason they, especially used permit was bound to be void. Um, I think that, I mean. To the extent you're asking. It, for an interpretation of what it means, if, if, if the town board's prohibition on a vehicular road access. Stand them out to saying that there can be no emergency access. I mean, that, that's a question that you're asking, I mean, I think that's something I can answer. Or Laura can answer, but I don't think the town board really would be involved in answering that.
Well.
Well, I, I definitely would accept your or Laura's answer, right?
Yeah.
Well, I mean. So. I think. We, as a board, always wanna be really good planning and not make cul-de-sack that. You know. Are. Hard to get to. In emergencies, and like, I think the way I typically think about it is, like. We're in an ice storm or something and a tree falls across the front of the cul- like, the very first couple houses on the cul-de-sac. And then somebody has an emergency at the end of the cul-de-sac, um, also storm-related or for whatever reason. Um, you know, how do we get, how do we get the emergency vehicles to the end of the road? Um, but I, you know, like, you're talking about a very unlikely situation, which was brought up before. So it doesn't have to be the most amazing emergency access ever, like. I don't know that we want to set precedence with saying no emergency access, but. If we could, we, should we, like, will the, will the fire trucks just drive down the bike path if there's no other way? Probably.
Laura, why wouldn't they just sit on, why wouldn't they just sit on River Road and go through a backyard?
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah, I mean.
It's amazing, it's, it's amazing to me that on this small of a cul-de-sac that we even are considering it, I mean it.
That's, so I, yeah, and that's, and that's kind of what I'm getting at, if you don't. Have a designated emergency access on this one subdivision, if you have tried and it just doesn't work. I think that it would probably be okay, because. Like Joel is saying, you could already drive. And you can already likely drive most emergency vehicles down the bike path if you needed to, and like. There is access on River to the backyards of these properties potentially, although that's something we have to talk about with landscaping. And so, um. Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
It, 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 I, I, I'm sorry, Lauren, I guess Alexis, maybe you wanna comment too?
Um, no, I mean, I just was, so Laura kind of addressed the, the emergency access, the need for it. Meaning, can you guys move forward without having a definite answer on the emergency access? I think that the town boards, I mean. It, it, the, the resolution is worded very clearly, no, no connection. Um. I mean, that said, the secret determination was based on the adverse impact that would be caused by. Uh, traffic increase, where this is more related to emergency access, so it's not related to really traffic, it would just be in an. Ad hoc situation in which it was necessary. That said, I mean, like Laura said, I think that you don't wanna get too hung up on, uh. You know, very remote contingencies while, while you, you have an obligation to consider the emergency access, I mean, think of the number of houses that would be affected, and as long as they're spaced in a way in which I think. You know, emergency vehicle would be able to get through and go over the grass in case that it would be necessary. Then I don't think it should be the, you know. A decision that's gonna be holding up from moving forward.
And that's.
Hey Laura, Joel, I live on a double cul-de-sac with no emergency access, and what about Rembrandt? What about all the cul-de-sacks off of River Road?
Joel, that's what I was saying earlier. You know, Joel, you can go back in history on lots of things, right, area variances, uh, past approvals. Uh, we made it, this board, you know, some time ago, made a decision on a go-forward basis, we're gonna have. Emergency access, and that's what we have been doing.
Yeah.
Well, that's several subdivisions, so, yeah, you can, you know, it could be something out there from years ago. Okay?
Alright.
But we gotta go ahead, you know, your recommendation.
Unfortunately, from, from my perspective, I don't think we can be very loose about it, Laura, I'm sorry, right, I mean, leave it up to the emergency. Vehicles at that time point. I think we need to be very determined about it. Right, as to what is going to be the second point of emergency entry into Kelch Farm. Right, and so. Right, I think we need to get that specified in this, uh, site plan.
May- maybe we're overthinking it, maybe one option is, you know, the bike path, if it's constructed to be able to handle emergency vehicle, we're done. Uh, as long as the fire department or Chief Ling Filter, his name. And the police department recognize, uh, that fact that it'll handle, they can use that if they need, need to. And, and not put a gate and. Not do anything, you know, and just make sure that it, you know, it'll handle the weight of a vehicle. The construction, is it, is it that simple?
Yeah.
I don't think so. I think it runs counter to what the town board said. So I listen to every minute of that.
Yeah.
I don't think that's consistent with their intent.
No, I, I disagree entirely, they do not want a road. And they were very clear about that, and they don't want the planning board to put a plat note that says future connection, and. Like, if you were to poll them, they would probably all say, like, get rid of this stub, they do not want a road. But they entirely left the structure and the way to figure out how to. Plan this, you know, um, up to the planning board, and you guys figured it out, it was a long discussion with the town board as well. Um, and.
They did not want the hit or connection.
I agree with Chairman Walsh, and I think that perhaps it.
That's what they said.
Constructing, but again, I think we're talking about the same, the, the entry point to the road is also gonna be the same entry point to where the. Bike path is gonna go, and what you're talking about, Chairman Walsh, is actually having that bike path just be a little bit bigger there. For the possibility that there could be, as opposed to a separate area where there'd be a road connection.
Yeah, I don't even think it'd be bigger, like, I think you just, you just, like, like Kevin's saying, would you just, like, send it to chief and be like. If, 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 if all the chips are down, can you guys drive down this bike path to get to somebody who's at the end of the cul-de-sac? And if he says yes, great, and like for Flower Hill, um. Originally, we didn't install anything there because we were like, who on earth would ever drive down the Flower Hill multi-use path connection, well, like, multiple people did. And so all we ended up doing was just putting one of those knock-down bollards at the top and the bottom. Um. Yeah, it doesn't need to be a gate, you just have to make sure that cars can't drive on it, and those bollards, like, the fire trucks just hit them and they fall down.
Yeah, which was the second point I wanted to make, Laura, so if there is a consensus, Chairman Walsh, that. The emergency access would happen on the multi-use path. There would have to be a, some, something that prevents. Regular traffic from going onto that path.
I mean, we can ask Dale, but like, I'm just saying, like, I don't think you have to build it any differently than you would according to ADA standards, like. ADA standards right now are a ten-foot wide path. And. Like. Joel's saying, like, maybe you put a tiny bit of a wider shoulder on it, but. That would be what you would build with or without emergency vehicles. Being able to drive down it, so the question is. ADA standards say ten feet. And. You. Can a vehi- can an emergency vehicle drive down a ten-foot wide path? Ye- yes or no? If he's like, no, then it's like, okay, well, how much wider does it have to be? Is it only have to be twelve feet, and then that's, you know, that's the question. If it goes to twelve feet, is that inviting cars to drive down it, because right now it's ten feet, the, the one along, um, Windsor Drive, I think is, is ten feet. So the question is, like, you don't see cars driving down that one either, so we, I, we don't put those bollards unless we have a problem with traffic driving through them.
Right, and, and I said that in anticipation of. What Chief Ling Filter's answer will be. Right, if, if, if he does think that ten feet is not enough.
Yeah, then it's wider, and then you have to be careful, right, cause you don't.
Right, right.
Well, look at. While we, you know, Joe has this recommendation also. We wanna comply with the county's directive, uh, via the email, Mr. Sheldon's comments, right? We, we wanna have emergency access, right? And we don't wanna have emergency access off a river because of sight distances and the concerns that would promote people to walk out there. So we can link the, uh, extension of the bike path. To, uh, utilizing the, uh, proposed bike path as the emergency exit. So let's not extend the bike path, let's leave it as shown on the drawing, and let's have, uh, Joel or the, the planning department go to, to the chief. And ask him, is, as, as designed. Uh, will this work for emergency access if you need it? And we'll get their, uh, response from the, the chief and we'll take it from there. If, if the response is, hey, it's, it's perfect the way it is, or maybe you gotta straighten this bend out a little bit, cause it's a little bit tight or something like that. We'll just have Joel rework that, I think that would be minimal impact to us, minimal impact to the applicant. Cause I think, uh, you know, you, you know, again, our goal here is, uh, to comply with, uh, all our, uh. Uh, all the needs from the different boards and from the, the code, and to also get Joel moving here so he can commence his engineering.
Right, and to be consistent, yeah, and to be consistent with the letter and spirit of the town board. But at the same time, ensure that the, the life of the residents in Kelch Farm are equally as important as their Iskina residents.
Right, does that, does that sound reasonable, Mr. McPartland?
Uh, one hundred percent.
Okay. So let's do that, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll propose that we utilize the existing bike path. As emergency only access. And we'll send it on to the chief for his comment. To see if it works, if it doesn't work. And we still wanna have, which like, it sounds like we still wanna have some kind of emergency, though, then we're gonna have to kick it back to the applicant to come up with some other proposals, okay? But, uh, we're tying those two together, cause everybody wanted to tie that together, so we will not extend the bike path, and we'll submit it to the fire chief to see if this will work. And if it doesn't work, what will, okay? And then we'll consider it at a future meeting. Reasonable? Okay, alright, that sounds good. Uh, you wanna go ahead to the next one, you have, I printed it out, Mr. McPartland, I don't know if you have it available to you there, I can go down if you don't.
Yeah, so, um. You know, there's a couple housekeeping items with respect to. Um, just confirming with the developer, um. He's aware that the wetlands buffer can significantly reduce the amount of usable space in some of the lots' backyards. And those specific lots, just for reference, um, lot fourteen. Lot, uh. Nineteen eighteen. Twenty-one, um. I believe that's, that's the majority of them. Um, you know, lot fourteen is the biggest example of, of where. Um, you know, it may just be a sales and marketing issue, um, but we just wanna draw. The developers' attention to it before, um, the subdivision gets finalized, the, the property lines are defined. How, how little of the lot will really be, and, and considering that you, you. There would be some kind of boundary identifying the wetlands, um, especially.
Yep. If I may, Mr. McPartland, I know that, um, uh, several other previous subdivisions had similar concerns, and it's typical that we, uh, ask the applicant. To delineate the split rail fence. Uh, and that carry-on through so that, uh, you know, that, uh, when the lots are built, it's installed, and when a, a potential home buyer comes to look at, uh. Uh, the subdivision, you know, plan and the available lots to purchase, and what type. Of home would be on lots, and it would already be shown the, uh, the wetlands, either the Army Corps wetlands or the buffer locations. Which are both included on this drawing, I believe that even for buffer locations, we should encourage at least a, uh. A piece or a couple sections of split rail fence to delineate those as we have at other subdivisions, and I think that would. Potentially alleviate the concern for any potential buyers, making sure it's communicated properly. Any thoughts on that?
Kevin, I don't, I really don't like that idea, and my other lots, I mean, we. We delineate the, uh, the buffer zone with, uh, blue flags. You know, we, and we. Well. Essentially, we delineate the buffer zone with, with blue flags, right? And the, the buffer zone can be. And I know Lauren and I have gotten into a tiff on this, but it's. It can be managed. Managed vegetation. So. You know, in other localities like Clifton Park, that means you could have a manic cured lawn in the buffer zone. Alright? So. Like. Like Kat was saying, lot fourteen, the twenty-five-foot buffer zone is right to the back. Of the, of, of the home and the right side of the hall, so. Of the, of, of the home and the right side of the hall. So if, if. That wasn't allowed, you know, lawn wasn't allowed there, I mean, the house would be unsaleable, you know? So, I mean, the town code says managed. I mean, it's managed vegetation, um. I don't, I don't know what you want to do. I mean. If you want me to do something like that, I'm just gonna go back to R1, okay? The whole idea is this. Average density subdivision wants to give this huge green buffers up, all right?
Joe, we're talking, Joel, okay? We're just discussing, all right?
You want me to put a split rail fence?
We're now, we're talking, Joel, stop, please. We're talking about, we're just talking. I didn't say I want you to put it. We're discussing, okay?
I could see it as a, as a recommend, as a, as a requirement, all right? And that's, that's. This, this average density green face buffer concept. I'm not putting up split rail fences.
We, we didn't say to put anything up. We're talking here, Joel, okay? Remember that, okay? We're just talking, all right? That's what, the question is, what do we do for potential home buyers to ensure that they don't get into the wetlands or do something? Uh, that they're not supposed to do. Sometimes just putting a flag, as soon as a person moves in, they pull the flags out of the ground. And then they do whatever they want. And Laura can, you know, again, I'll let the planning department chime in here. That's all we're trying to prevent. We're trying to make sure the buyer knows what they're getting. On how much land is available to them and what the restrictions are, whether we include them. A split rail fence, a, a, a note on the plat or on each individual lot. That's all we're discussing. How do we do that to prevent a problem? And your, your suggestion, that's all we're talking about.
My, my name's on that permit too, for five years, you know, too, so.
So, um. So Amador Home has lots that are very similar and we required that they have a split rail fence on their buffer. And that's why we bring it up, cause we're trying to be consistent among all developers and they have a split rail fence on their buffer. And like, one of the things that we have talked about on the subdivision before is that. And you were avoiding almost all wetland disturbance, which is great. Like, the road's not going through. We moved the bike path, like, everything was moved so that. I, I, I'm not even sure you need a nationwide, maybe you need a nationwide permit for the road. But like, one of the things that we were talking about is like, there's probably no way that you're over the number of wetlands that can be disturbed. It's not that the planning board ever wants to see wetlands disturbed, but like for lot fourteen, I actually don't think that it really applies to any other property. Lot fourteenth maybe, and it, it, it may be. Worth it to include in your nationwide permit, like if you're putting it in for the road. Putting in a little bit of a yard in the back of lot fourteen, um. Because it's something that we try to be consistent with and Joel, you and. You know how we interpret that. So like, if there's a way that you can make lot teen, fourteen more usable when you're considering all of these things, like that's just. Definitely one of the things that we were looking at, like. We just look at.
And if we can delineate, uh, the, the caution or whatever it is on each individual. Uh, lot or, you know, on the master drawing or something to help preclude, you know, people. Uh, constructing things or, or doing something that's inappropriate in those areas and that's fine too. We're just talking.
Well, Laura, what if I, what if I move, move lot fourteen over next to lot seven? Move the bike path a little to the left. And I move lot fourteen over to lot, next to lot seven. And I just increase the size to lot fifteen and thirteen, whatever, so. Incorporate that, uh, buffer zone.
You, you definitely have some flexibility there, um. But to the, to, 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 I think, um, Connie, one of Connie's questions is why did those all move over? Well, part, part of the reason that they all moved over is because we're trying to maximize that open space and like, actually sort of bring that loop in field all the way down to the road. Um, so if you move a lot over, then you're, then you're not maximizing the open space. And like. I, I'm not a big fan of losing any wetlands, but when they're in people's backyards and they're not. You know, really.
That's my exact point, okay? That this is an average density development. The other developments you mentioned aren't, okay? We're giving this big green buffer zone. And we agreed to move lot seven over and to give all this green space. Next to the bike path, we're gonna put up an interpreted pavilion, okay? You know, so I'm working with, with the board, okay? But I think the board is not working with me when. When they're sitting there holding my feet to the fire on one lot, saying I gotta put a split rail fence up. And that we, we cannot manage that vegetation. I know you and I've gotten to do this a lot. You know, that, that has to be managed vegetation on lot fourteen. Or else I'm just gonna move lot fourteen over next to lot seven and lose green space.
Add a note to the drawing that, that explains the situation.
Joel, do, do you have a technical reason for not wanting to put a split rail fence? A technical or, or a saleability, marketability reason?
Yeah, gang, it's, I mean, uh, this split rail fence would be one foot from the back of that house. It's ridiculous. How could I sell a house?
Is there any reason that you don't think you could include filling a small portion of that wetland in your nationwide permit for the subdivision?
Yeah, I could do that, but, you know, there, there was no mitigation on this site. I mean, we, we missed everything, so. I have to go through this mitigation process now for one backyard, because.
That's what I'm asking. Need any permit from the Army Corps of Engineers at all for building?
This is the self-imposed Niskiyou twenty-five foot buffer we're talking about.
Yeah, I know. I'm asking you, are you going to need zero Army Corps of Engineers permits for building a road? Like, none? You're not going to need a single permit from the Army Corps of Engineers?
Oh, no. Do you see us hitting a wetland or, or God forbid, Niskiyou a buffer anywhere?
Well, you're putting that culvert between the two wetlands. There's sort of that connection.
Oh, that's not a, that's not a wetland where that culvert is, Laura.
Okay, well. So I mean, that's my question. If you're not going to the Army Corps for any reason whatsoever, then I agree with you. It would be a pain in the butt to go for one.
I'm not gonna mitigate for one backyard.
Um, but like, and I'm, and I'm just saying this for the planning board's sake, like. I don't want to get the call from George Amador. Like, you gotta treat the applicants the same. So maybe that means that we rearrange a, a couple lots.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move fourteen next to seven then.
You'll pick up a little space getting rid of your emergency access to river too.
Yes, yeah, I, I can rotate, I can rotate those houses around the cul-de-sac. And put fourteen next to seven.
Yeah, Jo- Joel, that's what I would recommend you do. Do we, do we have any issues with lots eighteen and nineteen? There is a little bit of wetland that.
There's plenty of back, there's plenty of backyards. Split rail fence in that backyard, I will.
Okay. So let's just pin that down. And I think that's it, right?
Yeah, that's, I think fourteen is the only one that really had an issue.
Be happy too, you know? You, you'd be able to sell the home.
You're right.
Now, I think that's the only solution. We might have to sacrifice a little bit of green space by putting it. On the road connecting to the cul-de-sac is. It's the way to go.
Yeah, especially for a single-family home. They may, you know, they may want to put something in the yard, you know, and. It'd be nice to have a more usable yard, uh, for, for wherever that house is located, you know? Okay.
Yep, and, um, um. The, uh. The setback for lots seventeen, eighteen is just in reference to the front yard setback. Um, when the, um, drawing was revised to include a boulevard entrance, those two front yard setbacks. Um, just needed to be, um. Moved to the north.
Right, and along with that, I believe, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. McPartland, but. Uh, the, uh, the, the part of the, the, um, boulevard or the median, whatever you want to call it, uh, moving that out of the county right of way, right, is part of that.
Oh, yeah, all right.
Comment for Mr. Sheldon.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that you can, the boulevard isn't that much in the county right of way. You can shift that back, just as much, maybe even shorten it. Um, but actually, the setbacks for lot seventeen and eighteen. There's setbacks to the right of way, so even if the pavement and the road is larger, it's not a setback to the pavement, to the edge of pavement. It's a setback to the edge of lot line. So, um, if, even if the edge of pavement actually went all the way to the lot line, the setbacks would still be thirty feet. Or whatever they are. I don't actually think they're thirty feet there, whatever they are.
It's from the center of the road, you're right, Laura.
Not the pavement. So I, they're okay.
The buffer for the rear yards. Um, of homes that have frontage on River Road, I, it appears that that's. That's been dealt with, um, so I, I'm not. Outstanding there.
Yeah, I may have created my own problem here because it was my idea to put a buffer between the, the. The backs of the homes and River Road so that people wouldn't have to go to the zoning board for area variances all the time. But then I was thinking to myself, the reason that people have to go to the zoning board for area variances, um. You know, if they have three lots, is so that their accessory structures aren't negatively impacting like the visual corridor of the road or the people who live across the street. So I mean, I know this is a park across the street, but I think if we are going to make it, uh, town land there. And not require them to go to the zoning board for any accessory structures in their, like, rear yard, which would be their front yard if we don't have that town-owned land. I definitely think that we should require that it be lands, like, it have evergreen trees in it. Because otherwise, people. There isn't that extra level of review of what people are putting in their backyard. And then they could be putting things really close to River Road that are backyard accessory structures without anybody checking. Um, so either it be town-owned but be a buffer. Or it goes back to being through lots and the zoning board takes a look and make sure that. Because the zoning board would say, okay, you want to put a shed there, make sure that you shield the back of the shed from River Road or whatever. Or maybe they say it doesn't really matter, but I just think that by, um, if that was just gonna be like, you know, mowed or forever wild zone or whatever. Um, that we might actually be creating, um, visual problems for people driving down River Road if there. People would be allowed to put whatever they wanted in their backyards.
Yeah, obviously, you, you want to see a shed and everybody puts their, you know, extra wood and their ladder and everything behind the shed. That's what we're trying to prevent, right, Laura?
Yeah, so I mean, it's kind of up to you, Joel. Like, I think if you, if you don't mind planting evergreen trees along that buffer. And then people can do whatever they want in their backyards. Um, or if you'd rather they sort of be responsible for how they buffer their backyards to River Road, then just make them through lots again.
I would think that. I would propose a berman a little bit and plant evergreens on it, you know?
I mean, I think it makes the lots more sellable. If you're willing to do the berm and the landscaping, it's gonna buffer them from River Road and. You know, make them a little bit more secluded, but.
Yeah.
I just want to say, I, I think it's a great idea. I'm con- I'm particularly concerned about twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. That the rear of the buildings are so prominently fronting on river, so some, some visual blockage is, um, something I'd really advocate for.
One clarification, please. With or without the buffer, they would still need building permits, would they, for sheds and such?
Yeah, always. Yep. It's just a question of whether or not it would be an administrative process or it'd have to go to the zoning board. If, if you don't put that town-owned buffer with, you know. Evergreens or whatever, then they would have to go to the zoning board for any accessory structure. If you put that buffer, then they would just need a building permit.
That would give the town some. Review over their shed or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, but in, in, in reality, it could lead to a lot of haphazard things. I think putting in a buffer.
Is better.
Is, is better because at least.
For the residents and, you know, when they look, you know, gives them a little bit of blockage for traffic on River Road also, you know, from noise and dust, whatever, you know?
I agree. I just want the public to think that you're giving them car wash to do whatever they wanted.
No.
Yeah, they, we would still have rear setbacks and side yard setbacks and major and minor accessory structures and everything.
Yeah, your points are well taken. Let's see, the issue is just so that they don't have to trigger a zoning board.
All right?
Yeah, the only other item we, on the list that we've not discussed is the sheltered informant display. Are there any objections to that?
I don't have any, and I think, uh, Joel was on board with that, thought that was a great idea and, uh, was gonna work with, uh.
And the thought is to put it where? At the bike path entrance?
Yeah, right at the bike path.
Yep, okay.
I mean, right at. If anybody's been to Peebles Island Park, there's a pavilion there. It's ju- it's more like just a covered board. And it discusses the history of the park. And what we do is, we would. We have put up, uh, we'd get, uh, it'd be laminated, you know, it'd be a history of Kelts Farm. And then it would show some of the fauna, you know, the, the flower species that were grown there. You know, and. I think that'd be a great idea. I mean, I, I could work with Linda Kelts on that, you know, but. Um, we have some old pictures of the farm. You know, we put old pictures of the farm, the farm stands. And then the varieties of flowers that they called, you know?
And, 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 and just a dot I's and cross T's, we still want to make sure, so if Joel's gonna move that property over to by the cul-de-sac. We're still okay not extending the bike path. That way, right? There'll be an additional house there now, but. I mean, I know I am. I just wanted to at least.
I'm okay with it. I'm okay.
Yeah, okay. So, so I do want to raise one thing, Mr. McPartland, Mr. Chairman, if, if I can. And I don't know if it's the purview of this discussion or not. What are we gonna do with the stub road?
Yep, we gotta talk about that, um. I think that depends on, first of all, Joel, how much construction you have to do over there, uh, over in that location.
Okay, if you looked at the, uh. The fifteen-inch sewer line, it's going at a diagonal. Off of the corner of Briar and Windsor, so. We're only mildly digging up. You know, that intersection. So we're not, we're not gonna touch the stub.
Okay?
All right, so.
So, so is the implication of that then, any action on that stub road is outside of your purview, Joel?
Ah, for sure.
Okay, so that's something that the town will have to handle.
As, as it is, I mean, I have to build that bike path on this town land, so. Alexis, how does that, how is that handled? How does the developer get the, you know? Am I treated like as a contractor or subcontractor or something then, or? Alexis still there?
Yeah, sorry, I'm here. Joel, can you just repeat the question? You, I say, are you treated like a subcontractor or contractor or a contractor when working on?
When I build a bike path, the extension. From the end of Windsor to, you know, the, my property boundary line.
Oh, yeah, so when you're looking on. Yeah, so we'll work that out, but usually, um. You fill out, uh, I mean, Laura, Laura has the forms in her office, cause I know they come across my desk quite some often. Um, you fill out just like a. An affidavit, uh, saying that you have an assurance, and I think that's how we treat it, right, Laura, when people are doing work on town land?
Laura's mute?
I think she might be frozen. But yeah, is, is that answer your question? I mean, it's, it, we already have a process to handle that.
Yeah.
So, so the key thing, going back to my question, based on the current drawings and the current layout of the bike path, of the current. Width of it, and that may be subject to change depending on what the fire chief says, but. Based on what's in front of us. You have no, you have no action relative to the stub road?
No.
Okay.
All right, and one of the thoughts, uh, there is that. Uh, you know, obviously the stubs left behind is that it is an opportunity for people to park their car, to get on their bikes, to hook up to the, uh. Uh, you know, hiking bike path. Especially some, you know, like, you know, you see people drive, uh. Uh, what's that, uh, St. Joseph's down that area, or they drive the lot seven road, they pike, uh, they park to have access to the hike bike path. That just might be another opportunity to, um, to, um, get onto the bike, you know, get onto the. That just might be another opportunity to um, to um, get onto the bike, you know, get onto there and get to the parks or wherever.
Yeah, I think that's crazy. That's a good idea.
So so I think I mentioned last time, I I think actually it's a great idea, but it will. It it opens the room for introduction to more traffic on Windsor.
It's it's not that big, right? It's only room for two or three cars. I mean, you know, it's no different than any other road that has the bike path nearby, you know? Alright. Um, the other thing that we had a re- review was the the county comments, and I think actually we've already covered them. Because we, uh, you know, we're gonna follow their recommendation. Uh, about the emergency access, uh. Uh, being taken away from where it was proposed with the brick payers and so on and so forth, and the median. Uh Boulevard entrance not being uh within the county right of way, where we discussed that, and those were the county comments. So.
Yeah, so I have the four comments from the privilege of the floor. Like how with the Windsor Drive stub be addressed, seems like we just covered that, um. Talked about emergency access, talked about that the bike path can't be a cut through in the future. And what is deemed forever wild, um, I think. Uh, when Joel deeds over the open space, like it would all be forever wild, that's the intent. Is there anything that's left green space for the subdivision? Um, when the deed, when it's turned over as open space to the town of Niskun, it would be. In the deed that it would be forever wild.
Alright.
And the comment that I think someone suggested that we make a note that the deed restriction be in perpetuity. That's how just our standard of how they're always in perpetuity, so we'll make sure that that language is obviously included and in. Um. In the resolution for the next steps, we'll include some language that says that, you know, any language that's going in the in the deeds be approved by the office of the town attorney before filing.
Yeah, and then um, CAC really likes deed restrictions because the town can't remove them on its own. Like the town can't just say, oh, well, we don't really like that deed restriction anymore. Um, it has to go all the way to New York State Supreme Court and like, there's like. A ton of case law that makes it extremely difficult to remove any kind of deed restriction. It's not, uh, once it's deed restricted, the local municipality doesn't have control over it.
Okay. Alexis, do you wanna, you wanna propose that wording?
Yeah, I can work on that wording with you, and we can maybe have it ready for the next meeting.
Okay, well, I mean, we won't need that for a while, I mean, until we do the deed, but.
Yeah, we won't need it for a while. It's not gonna be for like months out, because it's like not until everything's finally.
Actually, after final subdivision.
Yeah, so not for a while, but yeah, we can definitely keep it in the back of our minds.
Alright.
Okay, so are we, we're clear on open items in direction? I think it's pretty straightforward, um. You know, Joel, I know you want to keep moving here, um, so I mean, we're getting to the point where I think, you know, uh. There's not gonna be many changes, so you're probably, you know, if you haven't already, you can start commencing engineering, is that? Is that your next action? I mean, we're we're all set. From direction, we already gave you a sketch plan, right? I mean, we don't, uh, we're working through details now, um.
Well, with it, what, you know, um. Yeah, what is the next step? I mean, is it called sketch plan approval? I mean, do you have to have some kind of resolution or is it like it's just gonna be?
Yeah, just, I mean, is is the planning board like is is kind of happy with the configuration? It sounds like maybe just one more thing so that lot fourteen is buildable. Right now, it's not really very buildable. Um, and then, yeah, then you gotta start calculating your imprevious and submitting SWIPs to us and. Having the DE look at everything and then, um, the next. Formal action is preliminary subdivision approval.
And then after that, is it a pre-construction meeting, Laura, or is that too soon?
Yeah, after that's pre-construction, then you build everything. Um, and you're allowed one model home, and then you come back for final, for final major subdivision approval.
I think my plan is to maybe do the clearing this year and not start the road until the fall. Or, excuse me, the spring.
Yeah. You can't, which, I mean, it's a good time of in the fall, winter to do the clearing, obviously. Even if it's not subject to the northern longer bats, it's still better to be clearing in the northern long- longer bat window. But you can't start clearing until you have your preliminary subdivision approval.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I definitely meant, I mean, when I get that, I'm not gonna. I'm not gonna blast the whole thing out in two months or something this year, you know? So, and you said I can only do like one model home, but what about? What about lots one and two? I mean, they're, I could build on those because they're right off a river, right?
Not according to our code, because, um. Because you don't record the plat after preliminary subdivision. So it's technically still one lot, and so the reason you're sort of allowed one model home is because you can only have one. House on one lot. You have to record the final, the final subdivision and actually divide those into single, into lots in order to be able to build more on them.
Okay. Alright.
Are we good, board? Any questions from the board?
So I have no bike path going towards the cul-de-sac. I'm gonna ask the chief about the emergency access. Um, Joel's gonna work with the lot fourteen with the understanding that we require the buffer to be. Delineated with a split rail fence, and the historical stuff looked good. And I actually got kicked off the meeting. What did you guys decide on the emergency access?
Oh, um, well.
Sorry, not emergency access, on the Windsor Road stub.
Um, tell me if I'm wrong, Mr. McPartlin, but we just, uh, the applicant. Uh, is not responsible for that that stub, um. So it sounds like the stub saves, but we thought that it might be an opportunity for maybe two or three parking spots to utilize the bike path, bike bike path.
And the deed restriction language will be worked out for final subdivision.
Alright. That good? Yeah, but before we move on, I want to apologize to the board and to Mr. Bagoyne. Uh, I got a little excited, but we gotta remember, this is a discussion, we gotta have frank and open discussion. Uh, I know it's frustrating because the process is tough, but, uh, you know, you just gotta remain focused and, uh. Uh, you know, and we're gonna get there, okay?
I apologize. Thank you, Chairman Walsh. I view there's no need for you to apologize for that.
Yeah, I didn't think it was bad, Kevin.
Okay, Joel, I'll remember that.
I apologize, I apologize too then.
You apologize, you'll apologize for keep bringing up, for keep.
We're all in great shape again, right? Alright, no. That's good.
We all love you.
Yeah, I know it's difficult. I do know, you know, it's not an easy process. This is a, this is a big deal, this is a big job, so. You know, it's gonna be a nice project when it gets done.
It's looking great, I think. I'm very excited. I think a lot of people are excited too about this.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Any comments from the board before we move on? Right, Joel, and by the way, Laura, uh, we're getting close to where you can have the discussion with Joel regarding a town-designated engineer, right?
So we have one, so I just, I put the town-designated engineer on hold because the plan was changing so much and obviously, like. There's no need for him to review it, it's gonna change, but like if we really get it. Set, then we'll send it over to him, he can double-check the code, and then, you know, he'll review the SWIP, he'll review all the. Elevation for the sewer line and make sure that the water line is ten feet away from the sewer line and all that stuff, so.
Hey, Kevin, Kevin has a note, too. I gotta be nice to you because, uh. Did you guys notice my two latest projects going on? Troy Road. I got the Craigie Estate on the corner of, um. Shannon Boulevard and Troy Road, which is gonna be five lots, and then I got the Mitzuk House, too, that I was cleaning up.
My advice to you, Joel, is it's always good to be nice all the time.
Yeah. Exactly. I gotta remind myself of that sometimes.
Yeah, and that and that's just to Kevin, Joel.
Well, we try to treat everybody the same, in a in a in a good way, right? And well, thank you, Joel, thank you to the board, and thank you, Mr. McPartlin, um, for helping us out there on that one, and, um. We'll move on on the agenda, okay?
Everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, next up would be reports, if you have anything, Laura, or if the deputy town attorney has anything.
I don't know.
Nothing for me, except that we can likely have not the next meeting, but the last meeting in September in person slash, you know, with the remote option for those who don't feel comfortable attending in person.
We only have one meeting in September, so my guess is that we'll meet in person in October.
Yeah, that's how they're.
Well, it seems like we're getting pretty good at this, by the way, and I appreciate the board, uh, it seems we're, seems like we're getting through business pretty good. Okay, no other discussion, nothing else on the reports, Laura? You know, not, we'll move on to commission business. Mr. Oster, do you have anything for us tonight?
I do not.
Okay, how about Mr. McPartlin?
No, nothing, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Khan.
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Scribby Tennis.
Just, I want to thank you, Kevin, I think you did a great solution tonight on the, um, the fire. Uh, the fire path with Kelch Farm, I think it was really creative and smart, and thank you, thank you for your leadership.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Schenfield?
Um, no, nothing for me, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and Ms. Gold?
I'll just note that I also got kicked out of the meeting. I I told me I left and I had not done anything. Then I also lost my internet connection briefly, so. My apologies for the technical issue there.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gold. Uh, I have nothing for tonight except for thank you again. I know we've had some some tough meetings and, uh. Back lo- longer than expected, and I appreciate the board's hard work, uh, so thank you very much. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Khan, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Scribby Tennis. All those with favor of adjournment, adjournment signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, hearing none opposed, we'll adjourn the August twenty-first, twenty-twenty meeting of Town Niskun Planning Board and Zoning Commission at nine twenty-two P M. Thank you very much, everyone.
Yeah, everyone. Thank you, Chairman Walsh, have a good night.
Good night, thank you.